All right, I'll go ahead and call the order. This is the meeting of the Council's climate action committee. It goes Monday, March 4th, 5:30 PM. I am Matt Thirteen, that large council member in the chair of this committee this year.
I'm Susan L. District 6. Member.
Dave Rallo, District 4.
I hope he's some district 3.
I'm a member.
So that's the committee members. Anything else I join us?
Courtney Daly, District 5. Not a member.
I'm Ash Gole, the committee attorney and committee administrator for the council.
You're welcome. And do we have anybody joining us on doing sitting action?
There are a couple of books in public.
Great, lovely. So we will have time for public comment in our agenda, which is available on the committee's, attributable on the committee's webpage. You can navigate to through the council website. Edelton, my dot com slash council. There, that's true. Yeah, there's a link to committees there and this committee among them. And the agenda. Okay, so this is our first meeting, committee meeting in the year. So it was meant to get scheduling as I communicated to you all in our work to give time on the books. My hope is that we can have monthly meetings throughout the year. Keep at a reasonable pace, but consistent and not overwhelming. I thought since we've got two new members of the committee and it's a new year, that it would be useful to kind of cover some of the backstory of action on climate change in Bloomington and the committee's work in particular before kind of diving into the 2024 priorities. So that's the order of the agenda in the 2024 Committee of Practice and Priorities. There's some sublets there about oversight and engagement with the Climate Action Plan implementation, a proposal for legislative focus areas this year, expression of discussion of committee member interests, and then also discussion of past committee recommendations regarding operate gas power equipment. And then we'll have a period of public comment, a discussion about scheduling and affirmative. Does that agenda sound okay, everybody? All good? Okay. So I want to be sure just a bit of background and Dave, feel free to jump in on this as well, having been someone who's been here. And maybe sustainable to work for the city for much longer than I have. So Bloomington has always, I think, had sustainability, well, I mean, I always, Kevin Rallo introduced sustainability, I think, as a organizing principle and important policy area. In the council's work in the 2000s, including the establishment of the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability and the development of the position Assistant Director for Sustainability, which is housed in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Building on that early work of the commission and the establishment of a role focused on sustainability. It was also the peak oil task force, which I believe Councilor Rallo helps head. Was looking at basically transitioning away from fossil fuels. The framework of peak oil isn't as common these days, but the basic underlying principles, I think, are the same with the type of actions it takes to transition away from fossil fuels. And then I think building into the teens and more recent years, we, the city developed a sustainability action plan in 2018, which is still a guiding document for the council and for the city. And then in 2021, March of 2021, we adopted our Climate Action Plan. So more centrally focused on taking action on climate change specifically and upping our commitment to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions. Well, to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. So that is in line with global calls for efforts to achieve net zero by 2050, aligned with the Paris Agreement's call for achieving global warming, mean, mean temperatures of no more than 1.5 degrees Celsius from greenhouse fire times. That step, that net zero target in 2050 is in our Climate Action Plan. That is an increase in ambition. We previously committed to 80% reductions by 2050. And so that's a big step forward. This has been our main guiding document on climate since then. So we are almost exactly three years into Climate Action Plan implementation. It is roughly a 10-year document. If you want a physical copy, if you don't have one already, the council, the council office can definitely print it for you. I find the helpful for some of our planning documents.
I would like those.
Yes, sure. We can ask. Can you note that, I guess, for?
Yes.
For anyone's.
For anyone's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I have one too, please?
Great. And so we also have versions of like this special transportation plan and governance plan too, which would be useful. But let's see, so the plan is quite lengthy. It's organized in, you know, a variety of separate areas like transportation and land use, energy and environment, waste management, et cetera. We are also working on an update right now. Sean Mia, who's our current Assistant Director for Sustainability, is working on an update around more of the resilience side of the equation. It's a climate adaptation plan or resilience plan. This plan is much more focused on emissions reductions and often you need to think of climate, climate, action on climate change as kind of two pieces of a puzzle. We both have to stop the causes and adapt to the impacts that we're already feeling and will continue to feel for many decades to come. Sometimes that's called climate mitigation, climate adaptation. Other ways to bring that are climate action and sometimes resilience to climate impacts. That's where the name of this committee came from, Climate Action Resilience Committee. So that update is in progress. I know Sean and her team have been working on that. A few other things I worth mentioning. Larger efforts underway. The city has a climate action team that meets historically every other month. It is mostly department heads, but some folks that are basically charged with their department's climate activities. I have been our designated generally for that, those meetings. And happy to have a practice of like communicating with this, this group about what's going on there. It's kind of, I find it to be not always in-depth enough or lengthy enough to really have deep, deep work on implementing our Climate Action Plan, but it's largely a accountability mechanism and a structure to help get all the department heads making sure that they're looking at what their departments are responsible for. Sort of like internal climate action teams. Then we have also, as of, I think about a year ago, launched something called Project 46, which is a regional climate collaborative with the town of Mashville, the city of Columbus, and buying participation from a variety of institutional and commercial stakeholders, City of Cummins, IU Health, the university, a handful of other businesses. The goal there is a cross-sector, cross-jurisdictional, regional effort. Some climate actions are regional in nature, protection for our watershed, for instance, amidst a changing climate with changing impacts. Regional transportation is another, but I think there was also, there was a sense that we need to have private and public sector collaboration. We only control so much as a city of Bloomington. And I think there's an opportunity for regional collaboration on bigger actions like Duke Energy's Energy Mix, for instance, they're just starting what's called an integrated resource planning process and public engagement around that. That looks at their 20 or 25-year future of energy planning and if we can get those from public and private institutions and multiple governments engaging in process like that, asking for greater ambition. I think there's some potential there. So the Project 46 effort is, I would say, early stages, still kind of developing governance documents and figuring out where that's going to head. There was a steering committee that I'm on currently. The mayors of both towns coming from Cummins, IU Government Relations, IU Health, and then a few others. There's a meeting on Thursday this week. Also happy to share an update out from that and status update about where Project 46 is. And then I guess the last thing I want to mention kind of in the state of play in our community is the university has recently adopted a climate action plan as well. And so that was also kind of a long missing piece of the puzzle. University, of course, is a pretty big portion of Bloomington. And they developed and adopted a climate action plan last year and developed some committees to help execute that for certain implementation.
How closely did their alignment with climate?
I would say it wasn't coordinated with our climate action plan. I have, I have goals of enhancing coordination between university and our, you know, our climate implementation. There are some connections, but it wasn't strongly coordinated. Yeah.
Going back to Project 46, which has a lot of partners and to not mention Monroe County.
Correct. Monroe County has been invited to join. For all the public entities that have joined, there was a collective commitment to devote a certain amount of resources per capita to the effort, to actually resource it and support it. I forget exactly what that was. We approved it by a resolution on the council in late 2022 and one of the first ones to kick in funding. So right now, for instance, we're conducting communities to have greenhouse activity tories across the geographic footprint and working with a consultant who is supporting regional climate collaborators in other places and helps set up some of the guiding documents and governance documents and those sort of things. I know Lee Jones has attended at least one of the meetings and I think what I heard from Nolan Enden, who was on the Monroe County Varmella Commission and chaired that, chaired that commission, was that they were kind of waiting to see more detail about what it was going to be and what its focus areas were before deciding whether to join or not. So I think the county council maybe supported joining via resolution, but not yet the listeners. But yeah, that's the status there. Council Rallo, are there, are there things I'm missing in kind of the high level of planning, state of play?
You covered it really well, Matt. I guess I just, you know, I look at climate personally and address the climate in three domains. One is replacing the energy use that we are accustomed to from fossil fuels. The next is conservation, is reducing, and the third is sequestration. So what can we do as a community to suck climate carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere? You can do it with trees or you can do it with grasslands and things like that. And so I think that, you know, there are opportunities in all three domains for the community to work on. Actually, I can give you a couple of figures. Could you put out those, since you just mentioned people oil, I think it's a little bit, because I want to.
Yeah.
This is a report that we had a task force 15 years ago and it was specific to a point in time that's inevitable, where we will reach a maximum of oil production or any fossil fuel production, anything of finite finite capacity will kind of follow this curve. Where it's easy in the early days and then you reach a peak or you send this one. And then you reach a point of maximum production and then the resource declines because it's getting harder to get out of the ground. It's getting less cost effective and so on. So that figure which went away. That's all right. I just wanted to put this up because it gives an idea of scale and a scale of what global energy uses right now. It's funny, it was there.
Yeah.
So there we go. And you can see the vast scale is like 80% of our energy die in this fossil fields. And renewable section right now is, is at a time limit. So that's the idea of what we have to scale onto or reduce consumption. So regarding people oil, we thought we were close in 2010. That we were going to reach that point of maximum production. And this is huge consequences because everything we do is tied, everything's made out of oil. Our agricultural systems depend on what, that is, 8 kilocalories of energy go into every kilocalorie of energy we get out from food. So industrial agriculture is totally dependent on that energy source. So if it goes into decline, food gets scarce and expensive. And we have a growing population, right? We're adding 200,000 people to the point every day. So, so the report was how does a community adapt? How is Mesa, it drives really well with the climate action. So we can work on both at once. And just to say, I think we're at the point, the second step is in a year. So we've been in a conventional plateau. We were looking at conventional oil. And this is deep water oil sands. So this is stuff that's kind of exotic. You have to go 100 miles off the coast through a couple miles of ocean and then about five miles of rock to get to to the deep water stuff. The oil sands is mostly in Canada. It's why Canada can't make their obligations under, well, the Kyoto or the Paris Agreement or anything because they're taking this vitamin entrained sand and they're stripping it using steam, which is really energy intensive to get to the oil that then they ship through various pipelines to us. And the conventional kind of guess what that is, the type of oil is the fracked oil. So that came online a few years after our report. And almost all of the spare capacity in the world has been with this light type oil. So the problem is, is that that light type oil is now building into decline. There's only five counties in West Texas and in Eastern Arizona that is still available for more production. So unless something else comes online, we will reach that point of peak and we'll see energy prices skyrocket and we'll see food prices go up and food shortages come. So it would be in our interest to be, to really expedite a lot of the recommendations in this plan. And I'll just leave it at that, just to say that because of this, my attention is really focused on everything in the report, but in particular, it's focused on local food production. Because I think that's a way of mitigating shortages and expense is to have a good local food economy. Because we import almost all the food. So that's, that's.
Yeah.
That's a good signal. Thank you.
That's helpful. I did. Two, two follow-on thoughts. One is that it's a really good illustration with like the, the sort of emerging technologies for like harder to get oil. And kind of two things that follow from that are like, well, first of all, we actually have like known oil reserves that like wildly outstrip our ability to keep the planet within a reasonable temperature threshold. And so at this point, it's really about just eliminating fossil fuels as rapidly as we can, alternative renewable technology, operation, energy efficiency. And then second is that continued reliance on fossil fuels, over reliance of fossil fuels is a massive risk in terms of future costs. So when you think about like every building, there's a new building that's instructed, connecting it to gas instead of electric for its heating is a liability, is a future cost risk. It is a building that is going to be retroverted in the future. So trying to avoid that could be called, you know, local policy action that we can take. I think, before we go into the background of this committee's work and its, and its scope, I'll pause there and if there are some questions or additional comments and feedback that looks out. Feel free to jump in. All right, I'm going. So, you know, the plan itself, I guess, is worth reviewing, you know, that's not allowed, as like as you're like digging through it over time and digging through sections of interest. A couple of things that are worth noting is, you know, there are things we control locally and there are things we don't, right? We need to transition all vehicles locally to electric vehicles. The only ones we actually control are safety, transit. We might go off some incentives and charging infrastructure, like in our garages and other places to help accelerate. A lot of that's happening at the national and international scales, right? So I think that's a useful frame to bring to some of the like, what are the impactful things we can do? I try to think about land use. I try to think about multi-vehicle transportation. You know, renewable energy, energy efficiency and programs that can accelerate those things. But I guess this committee started as the, the plan was in development. We engaged a little bit on it, probably not as much as could have been due to the pandemic. We had a little bit of struggle. We had at least some meetings with Lauren Cummins, who was leading it at that time. Like I said, we adopted it in early 2021 and the real shift became to have a space to help, you know, provide a level of oversight and deeper conversation over climate implementation. It is a significant plan, takes resources and staffing and, you know, follow-through to actually do what we say we're going to do. And adopt those policy goals for the city. Additionally, the kind of reporting we were, you know, that we can get at a council meeting is quite minimal. You might get a, I think, a report once a year or something like that, which is really not have time to go in depth at all. So that was one big part of the committee's kind of purpose and scope was to work with staff, have an opportunity for a deeper look at, a more comprehensive look at the suite of hundreds of actions that we're trying to accomplish. You know, they're all phase one, two, or three, kind of like it's like a one to three year, three to five year, five to eight year timelines and tracking progress. So we can make adjustments if we're not able to achieve certain things, we need to bring in other things or resource better. The other major, I would say, focus area for the committee was to coordinate legislative actions that are needed. So the plan is in, you know, some of it's programmatic and city operations and other things, but there's also a variety of things that require legislation. That of course is our domain. And so coordinating between the council and staff to move the legislative pieces of the plan forward was another goal. I guess the committee over the, well, I guess, three, three, three and a half years now, we were, we were at it. And there were some, I think, picks and starts around staff transitions, around the different pieces we were working on at times. And so I think progress is a little uneven. We didn't ever get to the truly regular rhythm, I don't think, in terms of reporting, but some of those things have been moving still in terms of a dashboard, a dashboard for the city's climate action plan that I think is set to launch soon. And other ways to again have like kind of holistic plan level accountability is a goal. So I think some of those things are coming soon. My goal is to have staff join once a quarter to help update on those fronts. And then we can meet again on a monthly basis to really coordinate on legislation and driving that forward. I'm realizing my agenda items three and four, we did kind of similar, which is the background of the committee's purposes and scope. And what I'm sort of suggesting to be a project that we take this year. So I'll just kind of transition into that. So that first piece again is really trying to like help provide accountability and follow-through for the plan as a whole. So making sure that we have the system in place to know the progress we've made, where we're falling short, what our missions are, like, and hit those steps. So that's like kind of goal one. Yeah.
Or is there some place that like we could look up right now, whether a particular action has been done or?
I don't think there is a single, there's been reporting on annual basis, but I don't think we have the dashboard online yet.
What's working?
So Sean Mia, and actually, McHalen Lynch. Name of last name Lynch? Yeah, McHalen Lynch. So we also had advocated for better resourcing. This is worth, this is part of the background, I guess. We've advocated for better resourcing and staffing to implement the plan because it is so extensive. We just had one staff member. They even advocated actually for a department at the cabinet level position at times and not successfully. But we did have a second staff member, I think, starting in 2023, 2022 sometime. So that's McHalen Lynch. And she supports Sean. They're both within the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. And then the second piece is when we passed the economic development, local income tax, about 4 million of that annually is going to transit and a lot of that money going to transit is specifically targeting fleet transition to electric buses. Allow them to get 80% match dollars from 80, 20 match from the beds to pretty rapidly transition fleet. And then another 1.6 million a year is going to Climate Action Plan implementation. And so that's taken the form of a variety of programs and support for energy efficiency and solar for lower income homeowners and residents and also like nonprofits. So there's a variety of programs in place, but I actually couldn't tell you exactly that 1.6 million dollar breakdown. And that would be like another example of like actually like having that visible and like ready, ready for, you know, available for our review as a committee or for staff. And local prioritizing among that would be another point of coordination or how like holistic plan implementation.
So when that dashboard comes up, it'll be like a public dashboard to let anybody get what's in say.
Yeah. And so, yeah, you should be able to drill down by, by action and see, you know, fully implemented, partially implemented, like not started or something like that.
And you don't know when.
We should be close. Councilor Rallo, do you remember latest on that? Yeah, I met with the consultant last year as I'm along with Sean Mia and gave some feedback on it, but it's got, it's got to push. But I don't think it's live yet. I'm not seeing it on our city's sustainability page. But yeah, has that come up in a BPOS meeting yet this year, Dave, or no?
No, not yet. I don't think it's been announced.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so we're not going to be joined by Sean until May, because she's teaching a nighttime class this semester. But our third meeting this year, we'll, we'll dig in with staff on some of those things and key up, yeah, the dashboard and holistic progress. And we're putting the dedicated programmatic funding. So that's again, one major focus area for the committee, I think, is to have that level of oversight accountability of the plan and supporting its implementation. The second item under our 2024 approach is a proposal for legislative focus area this year. And so I think our experience over the last year plus working on the operate gas power equipment is that it was difficult to make quick progress in the form of committee meetings when that was our main venue for working on legislation. And what I'm thinking might be a better approach is to actually kind of divide and conquer. So I have one or two members working on a particular focus area, legislative focus area, and we use these meetings to workshop and share updates, workshop language or what we're, you know, thinking and maybe make more meaningful progress, progress by having some amazing for this work with staff and whoever's needed to drive those things forward. It also allows kind of a level of, would allow a level of specialty, our specialization among committee members to dig into, you know, top of areas that are especially of special interest, I guess, to city, you know, convention to have food, a little food and agriculture, for instance. And I've got some focus areas that I would like to dig into as well and maybe evolve as well. So I guess I'd like to open up maybe for a second for what folks think about that approach of each committee member identifying priority item to help track forward this year.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also more interested in food and agriculture. Food insecurity throughout Bloomington. Oh, sorry, I'm not being loud enough. I'm also interested in food and agriculture, specifically looking at food insecurity in Bloomington. And we know that our most vulnerable populations are going to be hit the hardest in regard to food insecurity. And so I think one of the things that we could do, it's been talked around. I'm not sure if it's been specifically said at a council meeting, but it would be to plant trees that produce food in public spaces. One, that would start reducing the carbon footprint even more. And it would also provide people who anyone really in Bloomington and anyone who's passing through, who eats food or is walking by and is hungry. An option. And they kind of take care of themselves because, you know, trees pretty much clean up after themselves after a month or two. So that's the first thing that comes to mind when we talk about legislative priorities.
Could I just, because it's something I've been interested for a long time, that I always this is what happened with the urban forest of the wooden hill in Parks and Rec and, and boat works because of the mess. The idea was that, you know, they litter too much and end up with stuff through the ground and sidewalk or something. So I think the best answer to that is like anything, let's prototype it. Let's just have some neighborhood who would be interested or two or three. Who would be committed to just making sure that the fruit was picked and or disposed of. And therefore we can test it out and see if it works. The other option is to plant, it's like berry bushes, which are generally, if you, if you plant junberries or something, the birds will eat them. So if you, which would then would require residents to put a net or to harvest them. But that itself, a problem if you weren't interested in fruit, it's going to be eaten by something. It would be added by adversity and it would be for animals. So anyway, this is something we should talk to the administration about and see if they're willing to pardon me for this, but I think it's a way forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, the other thing is eventually nature cleans up after itself. Like it's not like we're putting plastic.
You will, you will hear from the administration. Well, I'm not sure about this particular corporate council, but I was told we're putting the city at liability risk because people will slip on the rotten fruit and twirl it and maybe we'll lose.
I've slipped on a walnut before.
I'm with you. I just want to say. I'm with you. I just want to say.
Okay, I think the other piece of it is having had fruit trees, uh you would be surprised at how much air and maintenance they really do need. Um they need significant amounts. Um if you speak with anybody who's actually trying to produce fruit um meaning, in meaningful ways. And we have community orchards in Wilmington, so that might be a good place to start. And I'm kind of wondering, instead of having fruit trees as street trees, really it would be better to just implement additional community orchard clearings. So they're really thorough. I'm thinking about parks, um because I, i- it's one of those things, like I, I feel like I go by parks a lot and their big green empty grass spaces are empty. And so there's this question that I have, how many big green empty grass spaces do we need to have in our parks in terms of people who are going to go and try to, you know, like play big field games? I guess, I guess I would say that they feel like we have more big fields than we necessarily need in parks. And so replacing those more with community orchards or with community garden spaces or anything like that might be a way forward. Because then you're condensing the mess, but you're also condensing any kind of care, any kind of harvest that you would have to um potentially do for, for these trees.
So we should work together if, if that's, you know, excluding, but.
Actually, we can work um outside of committee, like two people does not make a forum, right? So like two people could work together on something.
So and committee of the board, Mark is great.
Yeah, yeah, just a firm. And two folks can, can work together on something without, uh, yeah. Uh, probably never say, ever, you know, we're not even up at that, you know what I mean? Okay. Um, conversation about it.
It's like, you know, the orchard would be a good pilot program to see how it worked, how fast, how many people took food and how fast kind of nature by upgrades itself. So we can say, hey, look at this, this is not fast at all. Some people have to take care of it um or even, but we'll have more information after.
Yeah, I mean, just to get good yield for fruit trees, you have to prune them at some point. They often need, uh, me and you talked about her berries. And uh I had a peach tree and squirrels regularly got a whole bunch of peaches and I haven't gotten an apple yet this year because a deer keeps on coming in apples. So it, you know, there's so wide, like concerns. Um but the, the community orchard folks that are already doing community stuff in existing spaces would probably be really good. The other thing though, too, that I was thinking, because I read that too, I'm not even sure where it was, that that was anymore in terms of the idea of, of fruit trees as street trees, is that to be able to actually like harvest the fruit, it's better if the trees are shorter. And so a lot of fruit trees are actually like they've been hybrided as door varieties, so they're easy to pick. And um I would think that often on street trees, it's most beneficial for them to be taller, so the branches actually go above the cars, above the people walking, above the bicycles, and then shade more of the area. So I think just in terms of species, I would question whether those would make good trees as street trees. Um and I also, you should ask a forester or a gardener, see how the lifespan, because I also suspect that the lifespan, say, an apple tree is much shorter than, say, an oak. Um maybe think about ongoing maintenance and replacement. So.
Yeah, there's a lot to consider. There's also a possibility of native for its uh percentage of some pawpaws, some seeds for grounds, no care, because I have a fear.
Yeah, there is a pawpaw tree, yeah. Yeah, there's a few pawpaw street trees that I want.
I'll raise back. Uh I love this, but uh.
Oh, yeah.
A, a couple of thoughts. One is that um we should like definitely encourage folks to use the plan as a guide, too. So there are twenty-four local food and agriculture actions that are recommended. Uh when we're really in a status update, too, we'll kind of know where we are with some of these. Uh they are pretty wide ranging. Uh there's a strong, I would say, equity and access network across a lot of these actions. Um uh even if the plan doesn't have like a, an overall equity framework, um a lot of the actions themselves do. So, so yeah, it's like a plate, right? Like we, it's, it's, um, I mean, that doesn't mean we can't bring in new solutions and other things, and we still can, of course. Uh but the, the plan itself um is, you know, uh I think identifying a key thing within that to, to drive forward would be great. Um in terms of, I guess, are, are folks generally supportive then of, of, yeah, trying to tackle a project or two in a particular area of zero, as kind of a structure? Um and we use these as, as a, uh, workshopping and accountability sometimes. Um, okay. That sounds good. Uh so we could talk a little bit about, about committee member interests. And you know, we could also work with other, other council members, too, that doesn't have to stay confined to this committee. It's just a structure to help us. Uh but I, like I knew council members, um, Piedmont Smith and Rose and Barker, for instance, had both long been interested in trying to direct over compost, uh composting and at a residential scale, um like, like survey everyone. Uh I think actually now we're off as well. So maybe like somebody pairing with somebody on that would be great. Um but yeah, I, I guess in terms of committee member interests, uh among these areas of like transportation and land use, energy and built environment, waste management, water, waste water, local food and ag, health and safety, green space and ecosystem health and the climate economy. You know, folks, I don't know if there's already the areas people know they want to focus in. Uh we've heard a little about food um and food security. We don't have to settle on these things tonight, just uh sort of surfacing that if people wanted to uh voice like particular areas they're interested to dive into, um across any of those, uh welcome that.
I'm also interested in.
Now, do you have um interests for yourself?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we, you're talking about those?
Sure. Uh I'm especially interested in buildings, which is what I, where I work primarily professionally. So um uh the kind of pathway on buildings is we need, you know, it's not different than most pathways to um a zero emission future. We need all renewable energy. We need all electric buildings for an alternative to uh all electric heating, space and water heating. So you can have like that, like a thermal network, so geothermal, uh space or water heating, which can make sense in larger settings sometimes or new construction. Um and then investing in energy efficiency, uh to keep costs down and spend less um and then use less energy. Uh so that has a variety of dimensions, like I'm interested in this committee possibly project forty-six and others engaging with Duke's uh integrated research plan this year and, and next, because I'm not sure if anyone would as a councilor, Rallo, have you, are aware of any historic, like, local uh engagement formally in that process?
No, nothing formal.
It'd be great if we got like a bunch of C N S, you know, working together and say, hey, like, we'd like you to do better than your planning. You know, because we, we have these goals we're trying to achieve and we need your help, because everyone's, of course, our monopoly, you know, energy provider.
Chat, so we just.
Yeah.
Work with her on some things, so.
Great. Yeah, that sounds good. That, that, that is a, a very step. Um.
Who was?
Some, uh, with somebody about this, uh, with Sean Mia late last year, um about some of their local work. And she can definitely help this connect it. But I think, yeah, a collaborative approach to focus on renewable energy in that way. Big priority for me is like a variety of legislative items around building electrification. So some U D O incentives and looking at plant unit developments. Um I mean, engaging like with the summit, the U D, the experience this track that the all electric, same thing with city owned developments, so hope well. And then finally, uh developing a, helping, helping uh support staff, I guess, and, and the consultants we're working with on developing a decarbonization plan for all city facilities, the city as a, or as a corporate entity as opposed to community wide. They're thinking like city operations, how do we decarbonize our buildings? So we don't have any plan yet. We haven't really engaged with that question of how do we transition all city buildings away from fossil fuels? But I've talked a little bit with utilities about trying to um get their new facility to not connect the gas and to use either geothermal or electric uh energy sources for heat. And then we have a contract uh that Sean is managing right now. I think we're waiting uh for it to finalize it with a consultant party to develop an energy efficiency and decarbonization plan for city facilities. So that's kind of where that is. So it's kind of a variety of different entry points for um energy efficiency and electrification for buildings. And that's like, I would say, top priority for me. Also very interested in supporting transit and multi-motor transportation and land use policies that can support um lower emissions. Um, right.
Well, if, if, or council member Rallo, I'm sorry, if you have other interests besides local food and agriculture?
Yeah, I do. Um I think as Matt said, I think that there's probably a general consensus in the cancer, you know, but, um, compostables. And for years, it, uh, it, it's about forty percent of our waste streams is compostables. It's shipped over to a landfill near Terre Haute where it's buried and produces methane. Unless that methane is captured, that's twenty times the heating potential of carbon dioxide. For, I don't know, the lifespan of methane is in the atmosphere, it's some decades. So it's gonna cause a lot of damage and then eventually break down the carbon dioxide. But anyway, in, in any case, it seems to me that for a low investment with high returns, you could, we could have an effort to have people start composting, distribute composting containers, you know, educate people on how to set them up, so it doesn't result in burning, because that's gonna be one concern is, you know, the rat potential. We're getting a lease on speed. I mean, I've done mine so that I can, it's record. And, you know, we can have, you know, people start diverting that kind of waste, which by tonnage, it's a lot too. So it's a costly city, so there's incentive there to save money. So I think that's something we should focus on this year and see if we can convince the administration, start a pilot program of, you know, putting out compostments to everyone's, and with instructions on how to use them. Plus we build source. The other thing is, you know. So that's probably, I don't want to take on too much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be focusing a lot on the boil story, just because I think it's very timely, you know. But that's my personal, I'll be doing that on my own time, but.
Isabel might be really good. I want to connect with on composting, too. She's our solid voice sister. Uh, what do you have?
I would mention one other thing, and that is that ec- ecological functionality is an important aspect of this plan. It, it's part of resilience. I mean, it's not only our resilience, but resilience of other creatures where they're, we're in a biodiversity crisis and a lot of organisms are, you know, extinction mode. And so we ought to be thinking about that. And so there's a good, um, you know, uh opportunity to create, to focus on ecological orders, for instance, the city is working on for migration, but also habitat. So to the extent that we could kind of vary in the city, able to sequester carbon plus uh for, you know, for for pollinators and, and others in general. I'm with you. I'm gonna see a, I see a desert of lawn and I just go, I cringe. It may as well be asphalt. It's not that close to having asphalt, so, and so that, oh, we'll stop it. Those are interesting.
Are there others that, uh, y'all want to share from the Southford or James and the Bushes?
Yeah. Chapter areas.
I, I think that for me, the, the waste management piece has been generally something that has been important. So council member Rallo, if you're kind of got your hands full, I um will liaise with the composting uh
Cool.
sector um in terms of council members, Piedmont Smith and Rose and Barker, and their work on that. And, and then also that idea of the um just the habitat, the environmental health, that idea of promotion of natural landscaping. Um, I don't, I don't remember if it's in here anymore, uh in terms of using the climate action plan as kind of a, a guiding document um for some piece of legislation or encouragement. Uh but I know that there have been a couple of people, we, we have a couple of people in my neighborhood who have more natural landscaped, landscape lawns. Um one person actually is transitioning um their lawn. Uh and it's pretty cool. And they're talking about a lot of things that, that our neighborhood in general kind of talks about a lot. So I don't know if those conversations are happening in other areas throughout the city, but um that would be something that I'm interested in. But I think in terms of having reasonable goals for the year, I think, with the waste management, I mean, I um.
Right. So you have the finances today. I was like, it's just a starting point, but yeah.
I think I'm most interested in transportation because I think, you know, life consideration and the benefit for me being. I didn't focus on that. And then also just the local food and agriculture, council member Rallo.
Great.
Well, I think that there's a real uh connection between trying to get more composting, especially um like it's harder to compost in some ways if you're living in a multifamily unit, but it's easier if you're living in a single family house. And I feel like then there's this real connection between getting a single family to compost and then getting them to help move carbons.
Right.
Um that it like sits side by side.
Yeah, it's. It's very different.
Yeah, it's, it's a different set of challenges and a different, honestly, a different set of potential advantages, too. Because if you, if you think about collection of composted materials and, I mean, one of the things that I feel like got cited last year by the company that under was that it just was so much overhead to go collect all these individual, you know, compost buckets from all the single family homes. But if you have a multi-family dwelling with lots of people in one place to pick up, then.
Yes.
That's an advantage. That's easier to think about in one action space and so, so.
My cousin, cousin lives in Seattle. She says that there is compost in, in the neighborhood. We're being detected west in the city, which we use it.
There's a lot of models out there.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's great. Um. We could revisit this topic maybe uh for our next meeting next month and maybe have folks kind of like uh make the concrete, those kind of priorities for the year, maybe more time to review the plan. Um and even if you have three or four, but it's a priority, I don't, you know, like this is, if the other ones can get to a grade, if not, that's okay, kind of thing. Uh that would be great. So I did want to conclude, are we okay moving on to the next um agenda sub item? Just some of the recommendations regarding off-road gas power equipment. Uh so one of the action areas, it's that several policies attached, um one of the policy areas rather than several actions attached within the plan is about um fully transitioning uh off-road gas power equipment in, that, that goes from lawn care equipment, things like spring trimmers, uh mowers, chainsaws, uh blowers, um up to uh literally like, uh, you know, uh heavy duty like construction type equipment, which is harder to transition and we have kind of less control over. But uh the area of kind of lawn care equipment, uh will kind of came to form for us uh through um A, it's present in the climate action plan, B, uh some residents who've experienced a high level of nuisance of um surrounding properties with very loud gas powered uh leaf blowers in particular, hand going in at many hours in time throughout the year. Uh and, and so there's a, we kind of explored this, it seemed a lot of depth over the last year, year plus. Um and I'll try to give like a short summary or history of that, which in cover we landed, uh which is that um we, we, we don't think we necessarily have the authority locally to uh ban um uh all of the, the gas power uh off-road gas, gas power equipment, and there are challenges with doing that anyway. It sort of becomes, and there are challenges for the commercial businesses to have to transition, uh enough lead time, maybe that would be okay. There's not perfect um one-to-one alignment on all types of equipment yet. Uh things might be two or three times more expensive, for instance, to replace, or maybe, you know, it doesn't function quite the same way. If you're a commercial entity, you gotta work with a lot of backup battery packs or ability to recharge them. So there are logistical uh challenges. It's, they're not insurmountable, but it's not nothing. Um and then similarly, uh for local residents, uh you know, it, it would probably be um something that not a lot of folks are aware of. And then it becomes sort of a plain enforcement driven uh process. Um and uh we, we really did explore a lot of options. We talked to uh commercial um lawn care companies and residents and, and I check me on this, if I'm not getting it quite right, Councilor Rallo, but I think where we landed at the end of last year for our committee's last meeting is maybe three things. One is uh being firm on our timeline and commitment to phase out all city equipment, which we are well in progress on. Um parks in particular has really embraced that and is making some significant progress. They've got multiple zero turn mowers now going in like the cemeteries and elsewhere. And it's going all pretty well. Uh so that's something that like from Street is often updating on um at the climate action team meetings, for instance. And they have to be very firm on the city's phase out timelines, but then trying to ideally get voluntary commitments for. And they have to confirm on the city's phase-out timelines, but then trying to ideally get voluntary commitments from, uh, MCCSC, IU, possibly the county that'll join us on the timeline that we're on. Or if not that, who's making a commitment on their own timeline. So voluntary commitments from large governmental institutional, uh, I guess those are all, well, they're my two main pieces. Second is, um, uh, creating some level of, uh, programmatic incentives. Uh, so that will probably take the form of, uh, like trading rebates or something like that, or even just purchase rebates for, uh, equipment for residents. Um, and using some of the 1.6 million who've gotten the Climate Action Plan implementation budget to support that. Probably wouldn't take a ton. You could pilot something with, you know, $20,000 or something like that to, uh, do some, some rebates or have tunes to the, uh, equipment price and try to get folks changing out for mowers, blowers, uh, trimmers.
Price difference, you know?
Uh, it depends. We did look into this a bit and, and, um, Ash would be able to share.
Sorry, what is the price indifference between like oil or gas power?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's very large.
It varies by equipment. Is there a permit to show the answer?
The part we were running up in cities that, you know, for the larger commercial enterprises, it was power that was used was not sufficient in the battery.
Okay.
Devices and it still was a few years away.
And there might be a couple pieces of equipment. I think like large riding lawnmowers in particular are a bit more, like a fair bit more expensive. But I think that some of the like push mowers, um, uh, blowers, trimmers, chainsaws, those are all pretty price competitive. And just like way, like most people who transition to them like rave about it. Like they're quieter, simpler. You don't have to be, you know, fueling them and they're, they're just cleaner. Um, they're better in most respects. Uh, so yes, accelerating that transition through, um, carrots essentially. Uh, which incentives will be one more on, yes.
So would those carrots end up being sort of like the, uh, incentives for investing in electric bikes, which required to purchase, uh, certain local establishments or? Okay.
To, to, to be developed. But yeah, I mean, I think we can update that with staff.
Okay. I guess my feedback on that is that, um, it was such a price difference. I mean, we just bought a second electric bicycle because my daughter and I were gonna share an electric bicycle and it was annoying and problematic. And, um, it was, it would have cost us twice as much to buy one at one of those two local places than to get one that was kind of competitively, uh, featured, um, than we're in a drugstore company. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering how much that has been taken advantage of. And I know that there was like twice the incentive for certain income groups. But that's still would have made it more expensive for those folks to, to buy from. Cause it was only certain brands and those budgets were, um.
Yeah. You probably asked for an update from, uh, Aint Doc Game News. I think we well actually think, but it's also on, uh, Jeff, uh, Jeff's last name, uh, in, uh, economic sample development, although I think he's moving transit, uh, who does the transportation demand.
Right.
Uh, management. I, I know the, um, the program experienced a strong initial interest of a lot of applicants. Uh, so there was like a very strong, uh, community response, but in terms of uptake and where that landed, I'm not, I'm not sure of the latest.
So I got last year's, yeah, Sean Mia put together this list of the different costs between protecting the women, um, for mowers, um, uh, leaving blowers during the worst of the fall.
It looks like the blowers are actually cheaper for electric.
Yeah. And then, and the push mowers are competitive.
Yeah.
I mean, even the riding lawnmowers, it's like if you get in the middle of the road versus leisure. It's, I mean, if you're spending that much money on a lawnmower, that's.
Well, if you're, if you're a big outlet though, you know, if you're a contractor company and you have several of them, then that's a difference that would start adding up in that context, but maybe not so much for, um, for residential user.
Yeah.
Even capital costs weren't the biggest concern voiced by lawn care companies. Those were the power in some applications and the operational, uh, challenges to recharge the battery packs essentially. But the third area, uh, so city and other institutional or governmental voluntary commitments on phase-out timelines, you know, programmatic incentives, uh, maybe a rebate program. And then the third was some level of nuisance regulation, uh, to address some of the concerns to residents that are in, in sort of a, a very basic reasonable way. So I don't have in front of me exactly where we landed on that. And, but I think we probably have noticed from our last meeting last year, I don't know what we, what we thought, uh, before a certain hour in the morning, after a certain hour at night, holidays, a few other kind of just some modest restrictions on very noisy equipment, which probably technically violates our current noise ordinance, which is a very sort of like subjective, open-ended kind of interpretive type of thing, but it's never functionally been enforced against lawn care, to, to my knowledge.
The particular offender is, uh, leaf blowers.
Yeah.
So the decibel level of these things was, is absolutely incredible. And, and well, and besides CO2, it was also, you know, two-stroke engines. It was typically highly blooming. You get bad stuff with benzene coming out and, um, other hybrid burns that aren't efficient to burn. So, um, so it's the, that nuisance, it was the noise. I think people were particularly upset about the noise. So could we have a break once a week? Just, you know, one day a week and we don't have to hear it more certain times of the day on a weekend or something where they could run. Um, you know, of course, we need to speak about enforcement of this. And, um, we'd have to probably, it would be complaint driven. So you'd have, you know, work to the police and then the officer goes out and makes a warning or issues a ticket or whatever. And then we'd have to have a fine structure or whatever. But it's conceivable we could act on this. We could have some kind of framework based on other communities. And that would also show good faith that we were, because there was a group that was emphatic that we should do something about this. And I think it would be appreciated by most people. I don't see, I don't think it would be too heavy-handed in terms of where it's already, you know, in position to have, you know, who doesn't want a Sunday afternoon where you can barbecue without your neighbor doing leaves for three hours?
Taking a nap.
Yeah. What's that?
Or taking a nap.
And so yeah, there's, you know, some balance strike here between reasonableness for like, we also need to be able to take our quads. And like, even, even if we all might prefer, uh, raking and composting ultimately, like that's not what everybody's gonna do. And that's, you know, okay, but yeah.
I have an enforcement question because one of the things that I've heard from, I think, EPD recently is that they have a hard time going out right now on noise complaints as it is because of their staffing. Is this the kind of noise complaint that like you wouldn't necessarily need a sworn officer to respond to? And then is there a mechanism like in terms of that kind of enforcement to have? Uh, and maybe I've kind of got a new position for something, somebody, you know, it's like, it's like the people who walk around just trying to track the guests. It's like that kind of enforcement that is not necessarily a.
Or partner, partner talk with sewer, you know?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean by track.
Yeah. And then the resource officer could be dispatched to issue a ticket. Um, the question is, would we need some sort of object? Well, I mean, if we were just, you're not allowed to use a leaf blower between this hour and this hour, it'd be easy. So you should, if it's a matter of noise, the noise level, now we're getting into a whole different.
Right.
It would be subjective unless you had a device to monitor it. And then, you know, then you get into this, actually, it's, you know, this sort of thing is playing out with Carlin, which is a brake factory, you know, of various components. But anyway, I think it's conceivable we could do it and, you know, one day a week or seasonal or something like that. Maybe this group could talk about it next time with maybe, uh, you know, some sort of framework for ordinance.
Well, we were pretty close like last year. I think we kind of did settle on, we could workshop those, uh, that, that framework with this group and kind of get, get reactions. But we had, I think, based on, and staff and us looking extensively at what other communities have done, we did kind of settle on what we thought was a reasonable balance of, of restrictions. Um, that were not really burdensome, but we totally have meaningful at some level, uh, for those that are subjected to a lot of this. Um, so yeah, we could aim to, like, uh, move back, um, and, and maybe review that, uh, for next meeting.
Yeah. At the end of last year, I think last year's committee requested that I, uh, speak with someone, right? I, I did have that meeting, um, uh, specifically about preemption, um, and also, you know, and what you all want to do. I think, um, what we made on was, you know, since this is a member of, uh, two members, um, to mitigate the temperature for what you all want to do when they get back with the team, um, about, uh, about that. Um, I think, you know, from what I was thinking, um, with the car back from the way she basically said that, you know, a straight-up ban, like you mentioned, would be heated and likely cause, um, the Indiana general assembly to probably do something about that. Um, if not, if they hadn't already, um. And so, uh, she mentioned, uh, you know, better approach, I think, which is what they're saying would be to give out incentives, take away the noise. Um, but she said it would be dependent on how it meets the needs versus wills versus shouts would be as well. And what the penalties are, how long, correct, the time period would be and how that works. Um, so, you know, she suggested to involve in terms of, you know, taking it, um, sitting down in Indianapolis, shopping it. Um, but then she invited me to go up to Indy with her at some point and that's, um, what you all want to do. So, um, it's kind of a, a gauge, what do you want to do in terms of, do you want to ask the state permission? Or do you want to just do something? Hope it doesn't get banned later.
Right. But you, Sydney and Courtney, you know, I'm sure you, you watched last year's meetings. Now, and you're, you're probably all familiar with, you know, we operate under Dylan's rule, which basically says it's not prohibited by the state. Home rule allows us to do it, but it's unusual. There's an outrun in the state house to prevent this from being done. So they keep post tabs in Bloomington, like a plastic bag prohibition that we were gonna institute a few years ago. Basically, what's that?
Cat stores.
Cat stores. There's another one. So, um, uh, you know, I'm not sure I want to do a lot of work and then just have it go for no, you know. So I tend to think about incentives more than, you know, work on mandates.
Yeah.
Did you ask Ash about a timing ban, like say like no leaf blowers after four on weekends or something or?
So, um, compared to like noise? Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, she mentioned, you know, what, what is the policy driving the regulations? So, um, you know, is there a safety concern? What are the main concerns, uh, we should give the council authority to regulate in this area? Um, and then she suggested, you know, look at your current noise ordinance. Uh, do you already have, um, regulations? Are you able to do this already in square capacities? Um, are you treating it the same way? Are you treating, you know, this, uh, you can't have leaf blowers slightly differently, um, that would be more suspect? Um, you know, are you just adding on to what you've already do in your noise ordinance? Um, and then she also suggested looking at possible regulations in the, the UVO. There are, um, happens to be any sort of like limited operations in the hours of, uh, limited hours of operation. Or like we don't, um, you know, hammer on birds at 3:00 AM. Um, I'm not sure if that's not part of the code, but she mentioned that that's another piece. Look, comparison, things would be treated similarly for.
Yeah, that is your question. Yeah, it did. I, I guess, I mean, because that's the piece of that, that, you know, I'm thinking about. Well, it's those, it's those nice nights in the summer when you go outside and you eat dinner on the porch. And then as soon as you get out there, somebody starts their leaf blower. Um, well, it's still allowing people who need to utilize the weekends for their lawn care are be able to do that by having not an all-day, but a certain hour. Yeah.
It gets, you know, it gets complicated because there are other devices, of course. There's lawnmowers, weedbreakers and, you know, so we'd have to address specifically the type of equipment. Um, and then, and, and a lot of equipment, again, are the highly polluting ones where I bet people come to me with asthma and say, I can't go out to work. I don't want to be subject inside. When these things are running in the neighborhood, you know, I'll go into distress just to treat distress. So there's the health component to this, uh, pollution. So I don't know how that, you know, maybe, maybe as a first step, we should only address leaf blowers and just temporarily, you know, when they operate and allow people to use it in a reasonable way.
It seems pretty, just pretty right down the middle, like nuisance regulation to me, which we have pretty firm, like, their authority over. It's just time limiting, something that is objectively very loud. I think that's just, you know, I think that's maybe okay. That's my, my take based on our research to learn about it so far, but. Okay. And we can move back on this particular one, uh, next meeting to try to move that forward. And, um, about if we all are aligned at some level, I can, I can take point on that accordingly with staff. And maybe I'd give, uh, from the notes where we were on those things. And also just, I bet we've had multiple conversations with them, not so much county or MCCSC, I don't think. Though maybe Sean Mia has, um, but we, uh, spoke with Jessica Davis at Stanford University several times about this and about what that transition timeline looks like for them. So we can follow back up and, and kind of explore the setting of, uh, getting folks to join us in involuntary, relatively rapid phase out as well. Are we okay moving on to public comment? Um, do we have anyone in public joining who would like to, have anyone in here in the room? That's according to welcome to comments at this time. If you have comments, um, or others, uh, who are joining us on Zoom, if you use the raise hand feature or message in the chat, who have a comment to make at this time about, uh, any committee's work or any topics we've covered this evening.
There's one person on Zoom, um, if you raise your hand, if you can see that reaction button and you can't find it, exactly support that.
Also not, not somebody voluntary, just noting there's one person on, but.
Councilmember.
Councilmember David.
Hi, Jonathan.
Okay. Um, well, uh, I guess before we move to scheduling, I guess anything else that, that wasn't an agenda here for the Google or folks would like to, to bring up about our work for next steps?
We did just get something in the chat. Um, we got a comment, uh, saying we need to have rings warmers and trees. Three more.
Three batteries, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, yeah, anything else from folks before we talk about next steps? Okay. Uh, so just confirming, I guess, I think, I think we settled that, uh, first Monday of the month at 5:30 to 7:00 will generally be okay with folks. I think we've noticed this kind of those for the years. I don't think there's much to cover necessarily there.
On the first. April Fool's, sure guys.
Yes. Is that technically an Easter day? It says on the calendar.
Easter holiday.
Does anyone have any objection to that? I mean, I sort of, you mean, or whether it's a city holiday? Yeah. And also if anything, if you have any objection to.
I think the spring holiday is the Friday before that.
Good Friday, yeah, it's a spring holiday.
I don't know.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry, to be clear, it's not any councilmembers.
It'd be funny if we, it's Good Friday, it's called a spring holiday. I mean, it's just like, oh, we've done Good Friday. It's very obviously one of these. Um, and five dollars for a holiday. It's just funny. It's like a funny choice about, uh, a religious holiday observation. It's generically though, um, anyway. Uh, okay. So Monday, April 1st, uh, we'll be back here. Um, and, and yeah, we have, uh, some good next steps approached again. Uh, I think we'll learn more about, we'll get a lot of priorities this year and look at what we've got on. Yeah.
Can we have a pact to have no April Fool's jokes at the meeting on April 1st?
So.
Wow.
I might have to.
Sounds like that's a no.
Was that a motion or?
I was gonna say, like, we want stuff. It's a personal.
Yeah.
I'm vocal and thus I just cannot believe anything anybody says or feels for them all day long. I'm going to be doubting people in that way.
I'm sorry.
All right. Any objections to German? Same then? Thanks for your, yeah, thanks.